For me, I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Minutes of September the third, they look correct from back on the third, motion to approve.
All sorry.
Any discussion on them, all in favor? Prove the plans.
I had, uh, number was three hundred and twenty thousand six six nine point nine two is what I had.
That's what I saw there, so I'll second that.
Any discussion on any of them? All in favor? Both, Gary. Public concerns, anybody here?
Yeah, I've got a couple. First thing I'm gonna get into here about, there's three things I wanna talk about here, gonna take long. We need to get this addressed with wind towers. This Midas has decked us around, and I'm on the zoning board, and if you guys would have been to one of those meetings that we were at, you would have been appalled how bad that was. We need to get something here that works. It it's absolutely pathetic, and it's gotta start here. Cause I don't know what we're gonna do about it, but Midas is absolutely, that was like a kindergarten showroom that the last two meetings I've been to. And now they haven't even had one for how long, maybe four months? Nobody shows up. Every time somebody shows up from that office down there, it's somebody different, and they don't have a clue what we're, what we're, what they're talking about. None, so. There any response from you guys here?
Part of it is, what we've been told, uh, they've had so many different people working through that office that they haven't had the same person.
That's right.
Working with it. Forever.
It's absolutely pathetic. So does the county need to go ahead and do this on their own?
Well, the issue there is you start with a different company. Start over, and a lot more money.
Well.
And we're, we're that close to being done, that's what they tell us.
No bullshit, that's not right at all. That isn't even close.
Well, don't we have the preliminary stuff? The map? Part of, in our position.
We never did it with the zoning.
It needs to be reviewed.
What's that?
It needs to be reviewed with the zoning board. My, my.
I read the, it says the, um, Humboldt County zoning map was given to Randy and approved on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. And I don't know, but then it also said the plan was sent to Kyle on seven twenty four, four twenty four, so I, those two things are kinda, that's the mitigation, the hazard mitigation plan.
Because of the flooding, it looks like the, the hazard mitigation plan took precedence over the other one.
Right. But what I'm saying is both were sent on the same day, and there she's saying it was approved, which I don't think that makes sense. I don't think it could have got sent and approved on the same day.
No.
Approved by Midas, is that, is that what she's saying?
No, she's saying it was, which Randy approved. Which I.
I talked to Stacy at the meeting here last, before last, uh, she said that, uh, it needs to be approved, that she's, Tricia's wrote back to her, that, uh, there's not correct on some of it. She said, if we can sit down and blow it up, maybe we can get everything correct on the zoning map.
So I agree with Dave.
Yeah, we've gotta get some.
You gotta get moving forward with it.
Right, and Stacy's was gonna come up, uh, try to get on the agenda for a meeting, so she can meet with everybody and explain where everything's at.
We have withhold their, um, our payment, so we have withheld that, the dues and all that. No, and that's, that's what we've said. We're not, and that's what we, we basically told them is we are not paying you until we get, yeah, that was good English, till we get.
Get what we want.
Yeah.
And that's something that we can use.
Right. We've been messing with this for what, two years or more?
Over two years.
Yeah. And we keep saying the same thing, but they keep changing.
Yeah, I know.
And which, which doesn't help any, but like you said, we're kinda, okay, where do we start? Uh, cause I brought that up too. Do we need to get a lawyer? Do we need, uh, somebody who knows what they've done it and everything is well, they're almost there, we don't wanna spend any more money.
Well, I don't think the money's probably the issue here. The money is not the issue here at all. We need this to get some teeth in this zoning.
And I agree.
And if you want three hundred people in this meeting here against this stuff that's gonna go on here, cause these people are out pushing and they're pushing really hard, and they're not telling the truth. We can have it if you want a lot of people here.
I, I think we know the, the feelings up in that community.
It's everywhere. You know, there's a few people signed up, but that's, you know, that's their problem.
Right. And we've said all along, it's a landowner issue.
Yeah.
And then once the, once that gets decided, then we've got to get our ordinances and our setbacks and everything put back for what's gonna work for our county. We've gotta look at other counties, how they have it set up, and, uh, what's working for them, what's not. Cause I hear, when I go down to ISAC, I hear from some counties how they just love it, and then I've also heard from some counties, they absolutely hate it.
Well, I turned my phone off, right, shoulders to you, but I got an email that is an unbelievable email, is what has happened to people that own the farm, was those people have condemned what they did to their farm.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
And that's, that's what I hear.
Next issue I have, when we talked about getting that dredge ditch, West Ruppland cleaned out and getting those driveways out, and Rick said he was out there and probed that, and there wasn't a lot of silt in there, but when you get a big rain like this one here, there's not a channel for the water to go down that ditch. Cause I was back there, and it ponds up on the top side. The other one, West Ruppland Bruce, has never been played, nobody's addressed that issue at all. I, I just wonder what's gonna happen to all this stuff here, cause that, that ditch is just gonna fill in again right the way it is.
I went out. Cause it's dry then, and walked through it and probed it, and I mean, it's, it's limestone.
But we don't know, it's not, there's, there's silt in there, because we have a flat bottomed.
Yeah, we had an issue with the driveway across that was damming it up, and that got removed.
Yeah, but it's, it's silted in on the top side, they just took the driveway. We don't have a water channel in the creek. You have to have, when you make a creek like that, you have to have a water channel, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have.
Like I say, I, I walked that for a half, oh, the whole Peterson property.
Ain't right, is it, Eric?
It, it needs some attention. That.
So have, has anybody signed anything?
No, nobody's done nothing. The last meeting, and I assumed that someone was gonna get taken care of there, and this is a year ago or better.
The one issue, if you look on the drainage map, uh, believe the further south one, the closer to Ruttland one.
Yeah.
I believe that's actually out of the district though, I think that's where it turns. So you do run into a little extra.
But also they cannot put instructions across those either.
No.
I know there's a driveway in there too, that it's like a drive-through one.
Yeah, that, that's what they did.
They kinda clean that out too, but not maybe as good as it should be.
Yeah.
Is what it looked like when we looked at it.
But there, there's water stands on that dredge. Last year, there's water standing there, so that tells you something is not right, correct?
So you're saying the upper end is silted in?
Well, it is, uh, after, it, it's flat up there, there's not a channel for the water to go through, so it's really gonna silt in fast. You know, we just paid, it's how many years, maybe? Four or five.
I was gonna say, four to five in that area.
Yeah. Something, if we need to get a paper signed, I won't have a problem getting signatures, cause I've talked about this with several people on the top side of that. So, but the drainage district should not have to pay for that, right?
This is.
Or, well, what's out of the drainage district?
There's one of those.
If you fix either one of them, I mean, uh, the drainage district did not create the problem, neither side.
That was private, that was private.
Yes.
The, the driveway got removed at their cost, I don't, I know.
But the, the cleaning up is gonna be the high price. Cleaning it and getting water channel, that's, that's gonna be the high price part. Cause that's gonna take a long reach to go up there, just like dredging a ditch.
Well, well, you got time, stick around, and we can look at a map, show us exactly, cause I.
Eric knows.
I just, I can tell you right here.
Okay, alright, we'll talk about it then.
Alright, fellas, we got one more concern here. Every time something goes haywire, the county goes outside and how hires outside attorneys here to fix our problems, why are we paying a county attorney? That's just my thoughts. Every time we need something, they, you go outside and hire a third party.
Yeah, you're right.
So, I mean, any other business in the world, somebody would be terminated.
Elected officials.
Yeah, he's elected, so there, that part of it isn't much we can do about it, cause he is, that's a, that's a, his bosses are the constituents of this county.
Well, I'll shut up.
But that's, but, cause that's true. We've got other issues with, you know, and that's what it is.
I think it'll be dealt with at election time.
Alright, fellas, that's all I have today, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Coming in.
I too have something. This is, um, by the Indian in Livermore. That triangle piece that is highlighted in blue, and then also that parcel to the left of it. Um, the county owns that, we own essentially everything else around that. Uh, we were cleaning up all the trees, um, in all of these lots here this past week. There are like three or four dead trees on that piece of, piece, piece of property that the county owns. Um, we would like to tear out, but not if, we don't own it, so we would like to acquire that piece of land.
He was gonna put a dump station for the park, wasn't he?
Yes.
Is that, that's what, oh, that's why we own it?
Yes.
They got owned because of when the road was redone, as many of these places are.
Um, and we've talked conservation, and they are not going to put a dump station there.
They're not gonna do anything with it, if I understand.
Okay.
So, I missed the first part. You said we, as in we.
You personally.
Aaron Fran.
Okay.
This is one of those weird little pieces, we've seen it in other intersections where historically the, the right of way and the road has been altered, um, hundred years ago, and the county retained ownership of these small parcels of property. Uh, it, I personally see no reason why, you know, Aaron and Sean couldn't purchase this. Go through legal channels, it, it's just, it makes no sense to, the county doesn't want anything to do with it, you can ask Ben when he shows up, I don't think.
Hey, you, you're aware of this little parcel up there that historically sometime there was probably a right of way or something with the county?
I think if we go back to the transfer records, it was actually gifted to us, and not a secondary roads, you, Humboldt County, it was gifted to Humboldt County by the previous landowner.
There's no, there's no buildings on it.
Yes, I think it's a fraction of an acre, isn't it?
Well, my question is, let's make sure they aren't gonna put a transfer station there, so that we, if we would sell it, the next month we're trying to buy it back. So, the town, or the conservation board says, we have no intention, and I don't have an issue with it.
I agree with you.
But I don't wanna buy it back.
No, you don't wanna. I don't think it's a piece of property that, that you guys would ever develop, it's just on the edge of the right of way. It's just a weird thing, like Ben said, why somebody gave that to the county years ago, nobody knows. I guess they didn't want it.
I'd say have us, the secondary road sign off that we're not interested in this. Conservation sign off that they're not interested in it, and then we can transfer it to these guys and get it back on the tax roll.
There you go.
Sean, what is that? Narrow piece in the front that, with a thirty-five, is that access to the other, or there's, who owns that?
Um, I think it used to be a road. So, nobody.
That's where, where the road used to go.
Was there, okay, cause that's what I was trying to figure out, there's, so everything in the, um, this right around here, this is what you hope, you guys.
Yes, except for, um, so that's the Indian right there, and on that gravel road. Those first five lots right there, the three that are together, and then the next two, Randy both owns those. Um, we own everything else around here.
You are a door to the house down.
We tore the house down last year, um, burnt it down, and then the past week, we, wore every tree out that was on the.
Well, that's a lot nicer. Really, that was an ice war for years.
I think Ben hit the nail on the head, check with the entities, secondary roads, conservation, moving forward.
I'm guessing when you said we, you had split equity in that too?
Let's check with conservation and get a statement from them, get one from Ben, and follow through with it.
I, I see no reason not to.
I got, I got a question over there, are we just giving this away or we selling?
Oh.
I don't know. Stop with our tax lady over there, is there any?
Better check and see if there's anything.
We have to go through a process.
Right, we sell it, whatever.
You know, put it up for sealed bids or something, you know.
It's not big enough for a house or anything.
No.
Yeah, check with the treasury.
I don't know, we gotta make sure that we go through the process right.
Figured out by the time we get our paper from the, Ben and the conservation board, then we'll, we know where you're at.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I got a question, Dave brought up about Midas, are they involved with this?
They, they need to finish this, uh, plan that they got out for interim hold time, and then that needs to be approved by the county, and then as David, Undermark and the planning and zoning folks need to sit down and review all the ordinance within.
In the map.
And everything, but they, they have to have that approved, and then they work through it.
Okay, so we have, we have a contact person for this. Okay, I'd like to have that if I could, because I am not in favor of these things.
I'm surprised they haven't been at your house. You could have a real good conversation with them when they show up.
Well, maybe you have a chance to get off my property, and if they don't.
There you go, you'll call the sheriff. Good for you.
Yes, I hate those things, I don't wanna say, I, I bought that acre down there sixteen years ago, cause I like the trees, I like the beauty of it, I like the wildlife. I did not wanna wake up to look at a stupid word.
Fair to say that you are in the majority.
Uh, yes. Cause I can, I can walk out my house at night, I can look north, I can see all the stupid red lights pointing in pursuit of county, and I do not want it in my neighborhood, so. Yep, and I'm, as a citizen, not as a.
No, no, as a citizen, that's why I say you are in the majority, I believe, of citizens, for that statement.
They're supposed to be working on them lights, so they're out, but if an aircraft is in the area, they will kick back on.
Alright, well.
They haven't got that, you know what, they've been saying that for, since they put them things on here, everywhere, hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I talked to several of my neighbors, and we are not in favor of it there, so.
I've heard from most of them and would say the same.
I've only heard one that said he's in favor of it, he just looking at the money.
Well, I, like I made you stay in it last time there, Eric says, if you're one of the lucky lottery winners, they get the turbine, you do, you fare out well, and all your neighbors pay for it. What am I looking at?
Alright, absolutely. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Dean, okay. Alright, Dean, you're up, unless there's anybody else for the public. Okay. Dean, Cory?
Yep. Well, as you know, we're doing the school resource deputy, uh, at the school and stuff, which we all agreed upon. Um, the school had written up this twenty eighty agreement with us, this is the same thing that they use in the past with the city. Uh, I talked to Jim Murray, I, I was up at the ballgame, uh, Friday night, and everything was going smoothly, everything was great, he said it was a great choice that you gave Deputy Vincent the, the school resource deputy position. I did have our county attorney looking over, he was all in favor of it, so. Seems to be going good.
I can, okay.
So are we, go ahead, are we, oh, I was gonna ask him a question, are you working on, I mean, you got every, everything's not set in stone, we're flexible, what his hours are as far as.
Yep.
Middle school, high school, they're spending both, time in both, and as you figure out the other, was there somewhere else you were sharing, uh, I, I can't remember all of the details when we talked about it earlier?
Well, he's, he's trying to go to these other schools as well, a lot of the time, because the high school, you know, they want him to, certain kinds of, but then he's, he's kinda free to go wherever he wants to. So, and I know I have, and I think Cory has too, we've gone to these other schools, uh, you know, and spent some time there too, for, with us, so.
But the school is working, cause the other day when you and I talked, you said they had made comment about they don't want, they want kids out of parking lot, they want them, so we are rolling through the parking lots, making sure that they're all, all good kids.
Yep, Mike and I, we've been up there, uh, several times, uh, in the morning, and we kicked some kids out of the, so, yeah, I think, I think that's kind of, uh, taking care of itself. I think the concern they have is like, uh, after school's out, like at two o'clock in the morning and stuff like that, so.
Alright.
And we're, we're addressing that right now, too, so.
Okay. Okay, good.
Well, I'll make that motion to approve the, um, twenty, the memorandum of understanding, the twenty eighty agreement for the school resource deputy position.
You're gonna do well, isn't it?
Pardon?
Cause a memorandum of understanding with the unions.
Do it as a separate one then, okay. The first one's the, on the first page is the memorandum of understanding, yep. It's that one for.
You said.
There's the memorandum of understanding, which is the first one, first page.
Is that the one you're motioning on then?
Yes, they want separate. And you said, uh, John has looked this over and gave us approval.
All favorite? Both, Gary, I'll second.
Okay, then I'll make the motion for the twenty eighty agreement for the school resource deputy position.
I'll second.
Uh, this guy can.
I have a question on that, does that work, uh, year to year, or how is this term set up? All I didn't know, I didn't know it was a five year, cause we did, when we do our twenty eighteens with the surrounding towns, isn't that on a four or five year, I just wanted a three year, didn't I?
That's what I thought it was, three.
Alright. So I just wanted to know if we had to do this yearly, or they had an agreement for?
Well, it says states in the MOU that it's, uh, yearly unless agreed upon by the parties, the memorandum of understanding.
That's the memorandum.
Yeah, that's a yearly.
That's for the, the deputy internally.
Okay.
This here, it says the duration of the agreement shall be September one, twenty twenty four, and run indefinitely until either party terminates the agreement upon ninety days, written notice, but we did a three year when we were talking with Jim, cause we don't want it just for one year, we, we talked about doing it for, for three years, cause you gotta have a, some kind of continuity.
Okay, so, that was.
That makes sense.
Term three, is that what you're doing, or you're going?
This is until we, yeah, is, so the school, the school did sign off on this, the board of directors.
Any other discussion on that one? All favorite?
Alright.
Both, Gary. Like both side?
Thank you, can you, uh, once it's signed, email it to either quarter, I, I'll give it to whoever needs still to.
Yeah.
Question.
Jim Murray wants the twenty eight year soon as possible.
I, I just reading through, through this, and something they call them S R D, sometimes S R O, so what are we gonna call this? I know, what, what is?
Officially S R D.
S R D, cause he's still a deputy.
Yes.
That's why, okay, now, once later on, they call him S R O, and you just wanna get it straight.
Deputy.
Maybe guy, new deputy hired?
Uh, hopefully this week, we tested, we interviewed last week, and hopefully, uh, Saturday, tomorrow, or Wednesday, we'll make a decision, and get somebody on board.
How soon will they start then?
Uh, it all depends, if they have to give their notice and everything, so. We're probably prepared in two weeks, so.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully for sure in a month.
That was good.
Hired and rode, so.
Okay.
Good. Anything else for Dean?
When you stand up, will you pull that? Well, I'm seeing people fanning themselves, we have a fan, we can move some air, thank you.
Think about Rick and Eric, tomorrow we'll get the L C board meeting, so they'll decide where we're gonna put this new person.
Sounds like you'd be at the school.
Well, yeah.
I mean, you, you lost one, so you should be fine.
Still need a workspace, cause.
Yeah, it's small, small though.
We, uh, when we, if somebody, well, they don't really want him up there at the school, they want it down there, so they'll still need a big workspace, so.
Should we add on to the building?
No.
No.
We could.
Yeah.
Okay, you start the campaign for raising funds and see what we can do. Well, there you go. Don't print that. Please.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're running a little behind Ramona.
Okay, I'll speak for Ramona, so I work at Community and Family Resources, um, we're based out of Fort Dodge, and I emailed out a, a proclamation on Thursday, I don't know if that was shared. Okay, so I was just, um, wanting to see if you guys would recognize that this month is National Recovery Month for people with substance use disorders. Um, so today, we proclaim September as substance recovery month, a time to honor those in recovery and recognize the challenges of substance use disorders. Addiction affects millions, and we must demonstrate that no one is alone in this struggle. We celebrate those in recovery, their stories inspire hope, and underscore the importance of community support. Let us foster an environment of healing and work to break down stigma. I encourage the board and everyone to participate in events this month, and to promote awareness of available resources. Together, we can support those affected by substance use and celebrate recovery. That's pretty much all I have, I also have, um, some trainings about opioids that I can offer. Um, I didn't email those out, but I did send off two copies, so if anyone here or in the community is wanting any sort of training on opioids, um, depending on the training they want, I can give them renarcan, as long as they do participate in the training, we have some on, um, stigma associated with substance use disorders. Um, I don't know, we've, we've got a lot of trainings, I referenced it off two copies, but.
Ramona is in, um, heads up our alcohol and opioid coalition, and I forgot.
Victoria.
Victoria, I just wanted to, and you're laughing, Victoria.
Slinger.
Okay, so I know they'll wanna. So, okay.
Mine, S L I N K A R D.
And Victoria's been up at our alcohol meetings too. So we appreciate what you guys have been doing, so we thank you very much. It's been very good, it's been very informational, informative, and scary. It's been very good, it's been very informational, informative, and scary. Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion for claiming September as National Recovery Month.
I'll second that. Any discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
All carried.
Just go back this way, or to them?
Take it over to them, it's all signed.
Or do we keep copy of it?
We'll leave a copy of it, and just email that, right, or just email it off to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, and then I think question supervisor wants us to take a picture, and then after all this, we'll come back.
Oh, oh, wow.
Yo.
Hey.
Would you supervise?
Um, right now, it's Shelley.
Oh.
That's just to prove you were here, right?
The agenda, yes. But they might like send it out internally as well.
Well, Michelle's on vacation this week, isn't she?
I don't know.
Like.
Uh, we don't know those things unless we try to email her.
Maybe it was last week, we had a meeting, I was trying to look in here and see the, he, I thought I had an email with, uh, all the different things that they had going on in the area.
I know she was working last week, at least on Thursday, so maybe it's this week.
I won't tell.
Oh, who told?
Well, Dean's, we have a drainage and all that stuff, we wanna do a quick picture, so they can get out here. They can stand over here and they can touch the wall real quick.
Just stand here.
Stand here in my shorts.
Ben, will you, Ben, will you take a picture? Ben, Ben's a good photographer.
Either or, Matt, he's.
Oh, yeah, Matt, he's a, he's a pro.
He's, he's all, he's a little tired after watching the Lions.
Can we hold the certificate wherever. Oh.
She'll be right back.
Okay.
I'm sure.
You get in.
We can turn the phone, there is some.
Do we wanna wait until we have a copy of the certificate?
Sure.
Well, do you want to use whole piece of paper, because I don't know if you're, will you be able to read it?
Um, I have, I have a copy of the.
I have a copy. You got it right here in the back here, too.
There you go. Dean's taking a movie.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Here's a copy. Okay, thank you so much.
Alright.
He's on.
Thank you.
Yeah, you wrapped it up like a money.
Well, I get it off, well.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hoping I have one week. I guess.
Much into going to grainy, all into going to grainy. All into the black.
Starting at drainage. All favorite.
Aye.
We are in drainage.
Okay, Colin, um, from Jacobson Westegard is on, and he's gonna go over the D D eighty branch, the. Um, the. Completion, certificate of completion, and, um, there's a, the change also on. The completion price.
Yeah, so, morning, everybody. Um, a- as, as Terry was saying, basically, that, that project is, is now completed, the construction. So part of the drainage district process is, um, engineer certifies completion, and then, um, basically that. Today, then we'd set the, set the date and the time for the completion hearing. Um, and then also along with that, I've got a pay claim and a change order for, uh, for Doyle. I don't have it, so if you remember, we did this in two different sections of work, Doyle Construction. Um, did the, did the tile work, and then Blacktop Service did the road restoration work, and that was in two separate contracts. So I don't, I'm, I'm working with Blacktop Service, I don't have a signed pay claim and change order from them. Um, but basically, the, the change order is to finalize, um. Quantities, so there were some things that were higher and some things that were lower than others, uh, for example, there was less. Pavement removal than we thought on Forest Street, so there was less there, and the net, the net ended up being about thirty eight hundred dollars. More than what the original contract price was, and primarily, that was from, um. Two different relocations of, of sanitary service lines that were encountered during the work. So basically, now we're trying to put in the tile, and then right where the tile was, there's a sanitary service line that. Basically, it was gonna be right where the, it was right where the tile, uh, was gonna go, so then we had to kind of offset that, those around, and that. That ended up being about five thousand to do those two. Um, but all in all, you know, we, we, the original contract price for the, for the tile work was around a hundred and eight thousand. Um, so we're just at about a hundred and twelve thousand, once we add in the change order amounts. For, for the tile portion of the work. And I will note, I, I have a letter here certifying completion and, and recommending amount of payment in the letter. Does not have the correct number, that has twenty seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty eight cents, that's not correct. The correct number is what's on the pay estimate, that's twenty seven thousand, three hundred and twenty seven dollars and twenty eight cents. Sorry about that. And then.
I don't see that.
I don't see any letters.
I don't see that letter, eight, nine, five, what is the forty seven?
Right here, right here, and this is right here.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
We're double, we're double paged everywhere.
We need to make a separate motion for all the things that sort of buy the completions of the project first.
So, it, actually, I don't think you guys need to certify completion, that I, basically, the con, the, the contract will be. Considered officially complete when we have the completion hearing, so today, basically. The motion on that would be setting the date, the date and time for the completion hearing.
Prior to that, do we need to approve the, uh, claim change orders that we talked about here?
Uh, I, I don't think the order is important, because they are separate, they are separate items, kinda, and then, so they don't, it doesn't bill.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we get to our completion hearing, and someone has a complaint about something that isn't brought up for attention right now, and we've already paid the retainage. What do we have?
Well, yeah, we, we haven't paid retainage, so this is.
It looks like it includes a regain, so it's not, you know.
Oh, there.
Oh, we still have the eleven thousand two hundred?
Yep, yep, we can't, we can't, by law, we cannot pay that until a minimum of thirty days after the completion hearing, so we're back at eleven thousand.
How many days out, we need to set the, the completion hearing?
Uh, it has to be at least, so that there has to be a notice in the newspaper and mailed, and it has to be at least ten days after. After both of those items are done.
Well, Trish, what realistically are we gonna?
Can we get it in, this week or next week's paper?
It probably will not go in this week, because it has to be in by ten o'clock today, so it will have to be in next Thursdays.
So next Thursday's the nineteenth. We can do it after that. One, two, nine.
It will be the thirtieth. Here.
Thirty.
We would probably be setting this for Monday, October seventh. Time frame. You have it here, there. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep, that should be good.
Okay, forth, Colin?
Yeah.
October seventh?
Yep, that, that'll work for me.
I would make the motion as far as the completion hearing for Monday, October seventh, uh, so we put it at nine o'clock. Nine o'clock for the completion hearing on D D eighty branch D. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I, all carried, October seventh.
Well, then I'll make a motion for, for the play, pay claim and the change order for Doyle Construction, I think it's, the amount is it twenty seven, two, three hundred and twenty seven, twenty eight?
I'll second, second, seven thousand, three hundred and twenty seven, four, two, eight, start at right to mark them. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All. Carried. I got a change order there, too.
That's what we just did.
Yeah, that would.
Yeah, okay.
It's at twenty seven thousand three, twenty seven twenty eight.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's all I had, unless any of you have any, any questions or anything else.
No, I'll just, I thank Doyle for getting it done before school started.
Yeah, that was nice, it looks nice, they find grade and everything looks good.
Help me just get some water to see if it would take water.
Yeah, get it seated.
Yeah.
Right.
You work on that? Give us some water?
I, I don't know if I've got the right connections for that.
Alright, well.
I'll see what I can do.
See, and are you coming down for that, or are you doing on the?
Um, I probably will come down for that.
Okay.
Okay, good deal.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good day.
Yep, me too.
Anything else for drainage?
So if there's anybody that has any complaints, we need to hear that before.
That's why they have the hearing.
They do the thirty day.
I'm just saying, if anyone in the area has complained, then get it to us, so that we can.
Yeah.
Before the hearing.
Yep.
Anything else on drainage? Want you to go out of range.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else signed on then? Think I signed it for you.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Ben, you're up.
Morning.
I have the approval of pay voucher number seven for our. Farm to Market Project parent eighty six. This includes eleven hundred and seventy one dollars of the reinforcement baskets that we approved. And the change order items on our local project, uh, eighty seven. Which is the removal of pavement, the reinforcing baskets, uh, the increased cost of sand during the flooding. And, uh, the millings that we used for the shouldering, as opposed to the class A shoulder rock. Um, the farm to market extra work order ended up being eleven hundred and seventy one dollars. And all of the extra work orders on the local project were twelve, a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty seven dollars and thirty three cents. These are the change orders that you guys approved two weeks ago, I believe. We just finally got the, the state to also sign off on the quantities, so.
Well, everything is good, and this is approving payment of the change order in these vouchers.
Yes.
We'll make this as one motion, would you say?
You can.
Okay, I would make the motion for approval of vouchers, number seven for both projects. Firsted, the one, one to market, then the other, uh, project number eighty seven.
Yes.
Well, number eighty six and number eighty seven, both, both voucher payments.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on them? All favorite?
Aye.
All. Carried.
Then I have a certificate, certificate of completion for the, uh, additional flashing beacons that we installed. Uh, this is just a. Final piece of paper that the chairman of the board has to sign off on, that says that we have.
Installed it.
Installed them.
That means that the O T will pay you then?
So then, we submit this for reimbursement, and they'll reimburse ten thousand. Actually, that project.
Yeah, great.
So it's all in dates, and?
It's all done in dates.
Thanks, Ben.
Yep, so that, uh, that is done, those are completed, we submitted, uh, our request for additional funding here, three weeks ago, I believe. To the state for, uh, paved shoulders through three curves, as well as some additional flashing beacons that we're looking at, so.
Okay.
We'll find out around the beginning of the year.
Okay.
If we're awarded that, yeah.
Do we have a home surveillance?
For where they're gonna go, yes. Um. The additional intersections where there's an accident history, as well as, uh, where we're looking at, uh. Yellow flashing beacons at the bottom of Ballbertine Hill, where we've had fatalities, trying to draw more attention to the curb. Yeah.
I was gonna say, I don't know, South, but, I, I don't know how expensive they were. Out in, uh, South Dakota, the Chevron signs, when you drove up to them, they light it as you went around the curb.
Really?
I've never seen that before, you know?
Yep.
Except if your headlights have activated them, or what, it'd flash.
They've got, uh, a motion sensor that they put on them signs, and then they work in sequence as you go around. They're, uh, very expensive, yes.
There wasn't a lot of them, just on one curb in particular.
But really enjoyed.
Did you turn around and go back and do it again?
Well, I drove everywhere multiple times. It was, uh, something I seen, I thought, wow, that's neat.
I, I wanna say they're, uh, around eighteen hundred dollars per Chevron.
Wow.
So you got thirty six hundred for each post.
Wow.
So.
Yeah.
Ballbertine has seven, so.
Yikes.
But you know what, it'd be pretty, just the standard, if you will, Chevron curb signs that you've installed. Where they are and where they aren't, and where they were put up, I'm thinking the one in particular, just, uh, East Livermore, the one up hill. Or it's, uh, A J Birdies, yep.
They do make a big difference.
They do.
They do, having them versus not having them, in any curb, it really does make a difference, right? It really calls people's attention, even if they don't light them, you know?
And we've, we've added the additional reflective strips down the. We're just. Trying to draw more and more attention to the high accident intersections.
I really commend doing that and it does, you could tell when you drive on that especially the reflective, yeah, they aren't quite that high tech like South Dakota, but. They uh, they do make a big difference. Play really any place you ride in the state where they have those on the curbs. Like, oh, that is a curve, that's better negotiated.
Um. Beyond that for paving, we'll have uh, one additional change order which will have the smoothness incentive. Um. They've done their grinding, we're waiting for the final report from them, the DOT to sign off on it and then. We'll have that last payment and then retainage left for a paving job.
Okay.
The letting for the box Culver and Thor is scheduled with the DOT for next week. That's that's pretty much it.
Is that gonna be done then, what, next?
Next year.
Year?
Is that the combination city of Thor?
Yeah, city of Thor, it's in their jurisdiction, it's just flow through.
Yeah, it'll be.
You help them out.
It'll be flow through for us on the farm to market side of things.
Yeah, it's Bruce's question, that'll be done next year.
Yes.
Okay. Good deal.
I have one for you or a couple for you uh, in our claims today, we had bridge inspection costs. I'm assuming that's the two that we closed.
So the um, are you talking the payment to Chuck Hudson?
Yes.
Um. That was the bridge borrowings for the new Murray Bridge location. I think thirty four, thirty five thousand of that bill was the borrowings. Um. Because they were drilling. Into Bedrock at depths of fifteen feet. Uh. There was an additional cost.
So me wanting to get FEMA money for. We'll get our inspection on those bridges probably isn't gonna cut it, right?
Probably not, but uh, we will get reimbursement from FEMA for the inspection that they did for the two.
Okay.
And and the Burkeamar Bridge is still closed.
No, Burkeamar is open. For tra- for traffic five times less, it's open.
Oh, someone made the comment to me that it was closed. They said that if it is, it's close to keep semis on, but maybe it wasn't closed and. I don't know.
It's open.
It's open.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. My other, I visited with. Rick about this, with all of the. Talking around about the. Wind turbines, um, and I know you have our five year plan, all of the different bridges and. Whatnot that are. Weak. Maybe we need to look at that again to. So they know. We haven't just. Said that this bridge is. Suspect or whatever, can we look, review them, so, and we don't have clue where these things would go if they did go somewhere.
You wanna review our five year program?
I just like to see what we have for bridges that possibly, you know, because sooner or later, if they do. Do something, they're gonna be out in our roads. Calling these things up and down our roads.
Yep.
And we have. A lot of bridges or what we classify as a bridge, um. Yeah, I don't want them thinking that we're out here. Saying this thing wasn't.
You know, so we can uh, we could schedule a work session for after the meeting next week, sit down and review. All of our. Bridges in the county, um. I know. Typically. Counties that end up having windmills or wind turbines move into the county require. Uh, road evaluations before anything moves.
Is going.
And then road evaluations after they, my concern with. Them moving in would be. Our. Spin overlay roads. Uh, when we first started doing PC overlays, a lot of those were four inch, I don't think those will hold up. The greatest with these type of heavy loads.
Yeah.
Um. Gravels, it all depends on the the time of year.
Yeah, right.
Well. You all drive around the country. Sure.
Yeah.
And I'm not an engineer, structural or otherwise of roads, you go where there's wind turbines and you can see the damage down the roads.
Beacon.
Yep, and if you don't believe me, I'll take you right down into, leave it still in Webster County, southern part.
You run straight south of Hartford.
You've been there, you've been there, done that, yep, it will damage.
On the count. Secondary roadside of things, they have Webster and Green County had damage from. Yeah.
And and the thing is, just because they're done, then they come, then they have one. That's problem, sure, they come back with a big head of equipment. They're constantly.
They're already.
Yeah.
So. I think.
Too much money now.
Gotta have uh. When we get our own. Faster.
Sure, that's good.
Oh, definitely gotta have.
Yeah, I don't know what the status is of the ordinance, um. I was part of the couple of work sessions. That we held. Out at the secondary roads office. But the last time that we had one of those meetings was. April.
Yeah, it's been a while.
April and May. Yeah, there was not very many, I mean. Again. Nobody cares until it gets up in their backyard.
Yeah.
When I was at.
The the meetings are. Long, I mean, they. They start at six and there's lots of them, we're walking out at. Nine o'clock. But.
Well, I'm not saying we need to have a.
That.
Work session or whatever, I'm just saying that. As long as we have our plan, our five year plan is up to snuff and we got. You know, things that are on our radar for. I just don't want people saying, well, they said that bridges sus- suspect just because we were gonna put a wind turbine down. We got a lot of problems out in the country.
No, I I I I think uh, I would welcome a work session on the bridges. I mean, it doesn't hurt for all of us to sit down and look and.
Know what's going on.
Stare at the seventy two bridges, that would get.
I don't know that. Immediately, but at some point.
Yeah. I welcome that one.
I think it's just a concern along the other ones that we stated.
Yep.
Need to take a second look at our records anyway.
Well, once they get. There.
Yep.
That is all that I have officially.
I got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
I drove. From Thor. Up through already over to Renwick. I never noticed any bumps, just nice and smooth.
Mm-hmm.
About a mile, mile and a half from the railroad tracks going to Renwick. You've got a bump.
What about the tracks themselves, which kind of.
Not the track, it's a mile, mile and quarter this side of them. Down that blacktop that new one and all of a sudden it's it's a bump. And it quits.
To the west?
Just where they joined, it looks like, to the west.
Yeah, it's probably a cold joint, um, my guess is. The prophylometer did not register a large enough bump to grind.
Well, you can feel it.
Good. I'll I'll drive it, I'm just, they've got a. A gauge or a a reading that once it registers above a certain amount, they'll come in and they'll grind it. So.
That's the only place I noticed it, nice and smooth, otherwise going over there and then they coming back.
I know they uh, they ground just north of Craig Wiggins's place, which is on one ninetieth. Uh, the ground just south of Highway three where we tied into the existing. Um. To my knowledge, they didn't have anything that they had to grind on. The farm to market road, down the Renwick Road. But I'll drive it and I'll look at their. Their preliminary prophylometer reading and see what it was.
Okay. Well, it's the only place I noticed is. That you know, Jeep rides a little rough anyway, but it was nice and smooth until you get that and it just. It's just like a joint right there.
Yeah.
And it bounced us on there to roll it.
And that's usually where where we experience a little bit of a bump is. The cold joint between days, bores.
Yep.
Well, you have the doors off that Jeep and you were driving crazy like a kid.
Ah, well, and I had the wife with me, so I had to.
And we got any driveway permit requested on this bit mining thing that's going in western Renwick?
Haven't gotten driveway permit request yet, I did send a um. So they were approved a special use or a special exemption permit. Uh, I did go out and look at the site. Last Thursday or Friday. Um. For the actual building permit. Um, I reached out to Shauna and John, I think I sent an email on Friday. Uh, just questioning if the special use. Permit also requested changing the. Zoning of that ground from. A one over to commercial or industrial because they're only, the lot size is only an acre.
Yeah.
And. Minimum lot size for A one or A two is two acres.
I thought.
So. I I was seeking clarification on that and I haven't heard back from them yet.
Did anybody watch the NBC National News last night?
No.
They, there was a report on a bit mining down in Texas. And that there are a lot of people having health issues now because of the noise. Those vessels are at seventy, I know eighty five is.
That's that's probably why they put them out.
Well, so this place here is out in the rural, kind of rural area, but. There's.
Where's it, where's it actually located?
Uh, one fortieth. And. Washington, I believe.
Washington, okay.
The northwest corner of that intersection. So there's already a uh, there's a substation on northeast corner.
Mm-hmm.
That is Midlands, I believe. So it's on the, it's on the opposite corner. Of that.
Will probably drive me crazy long time, I.
It's uh, it it's all giant ragweed right now.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
I mean, they didn't. They didn't plant that one acre, my guess is they planned on starting development sooner, but. Yeah, the my only question to them was whether or not they were changing. The ground from A one to.
Yeah.
Commercial or. Heavy industry, whatever it is.
Is that the um? That's definitely not. What board, what board makes that?
More of the justice.
So did they, but they approved it, so did they do that? I don't remember seeing.
Well, I don't think we've seen those minutes.
Yeah. I don't remember seeing anyway those minutes. Cause Julie.
Building inspector.
She don't. Oh, John Bell, he was. Did we get them? Did we get those minutes? Cause I don't remember.
Oh, I'll see that.
I know either.
Took care of the building inspection.
Well, they had them upstairs. That was done last week.
The. That was a special use permit. Like the the zoning permit was the one that I went looked at and sent the email to Shauna and John, so. The building permit hasn't been approved yet.
They're breaking ground, they better get sleep.
They submitted their application, they sent the hundred dollar check.
For their job, but not for that.
This, I assume this is for the building, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's a hundred dollars for the building. So. Uh, beyond that, we've fielded a couple of phone calls last week about the stop bars that have been grounded in as you're coming up to Highway three. That's not us. That's the Clarion DOT shed. So. They mailed in all of their stop bars and there's probably a. Quarter to a half inch depression where those are at.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else for me?
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, Ben, alright.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on down, discussion action on part of Iowa Regional Housing Trump Fund. Funding.
Well, this is one of the things that we allocate money for in the year. Past few years. Since it's changed, um. Rick, are you on this board?
No. Can't think of anything.
Well, I don't believe so.
I know.
Well. I probably am, but they don't have me.
Well, they had one and. Well.
So there's one coming on.
Well, apparently we are obligated to. Four thousand seven hundred and two dollars a year split equally right now between the county and the city of Humble. And they didn't. Send a funding request. Prior to the budgeting process. And so we budgeted five thousand. So we have one thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars to come up with, so. That needs to be addressed.
Is this the thing that Cole called me on, when I told him that they could come up and. Put it to the board.
Yeah, this is.
Is this what it is?
Cheryl, you should be on that.
Yeah, I, is this the one where we had to do a new and the one closed, we used to meet over at Clarion.
It used to be Heartland.
Heartland, yeah.
Heart of Iowa, yeah.
Heart of, yeah, we we went with Webster County and. They right went with them too, didn't they?
Yes.
Oh, I know.
Oh, there we go, right, yeah. Because this is where we, because Webster used to be by themselves. And then we, I think this, I used to be on, but I have never gotten anything once we became heart, because they told me that. The supervisors were not gonna be on the. Board anymore. Cause I used to be on the Heartland, I was on that board. And then, and then they told us that no, it wouldn't be the supervisors. On it, on the board of directors, I don't know who is the board director, one of the board.
So it says humble. You know, we've. We funded five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So when, did the city fund any yet?
They have not paid their portion, but we did the five thousand.
Right.
Assuming it was the same because we never had any request or. Any information on a slave from.
Cause the city has to put up some and we have to put up some, correct?
But, but what did the cities amount then? Five thousand?
Um, it's six thousand five thirty one.
Would that have been their original? Cause they're asking for more money.
Isn't it a certain percentage, don't they, they do base it on a certain percentage of what your population is? I think that's how Heartland was, it was a certain percentage of your population. Was a per capita thing.
Yeah, and that I'm not sure, I mean. Because. So I've never gotten any information.
Is she in charge of this, is Amanda?
Dren.
Duran?
Yes, she's the one that the email came from and I emailed her and I have not gotten a response.
Did she have any other signature, like a phone number or anything like that on her signature?
I know. I don't remember, it was a forward from Cole.
So you're saying. With the fiscal year that we're in, when we budgeted for it, they didn't send any thing.
Yeah.
So we used.
They didn't request it.
They didn't request anything, they didn't send any information with any dollar amounts. So historically, we had been funding five thousand dollars.
That's what we did.
And we budgeted five thousand and they've already uh, got that. And we budgeted five thousand and they've already uh, got that. So.
So we need an additional thirteen.
You know, they say we do, but they never provided us with an amount to.
That's from the city would be the six thousand three fifty.
And I'm guessing they probably didn't do that with the city. I, at very least or most. I would table this or make any drastic action on it right now, and I don't know. Is that the fact that they didn't request anything, they didn't send a dollar amount? It's not really on us to come up with the money. Why didn't they send, they made their request, and their request, they didn't even send a request, you said.
Cole said he didn't give me either and.
If someone wants to do, I'm not putting Sandy on the spot, but she's asking for some more research on this, but.
I would see what city.
I would, yeah, between.
Well, Cole called me and he wanted us to pick up the difference.
We're obligated to pick up the difference.
I said, you need to come before the board, evidently he didn't want to come before.
I can imagine.
They got more population than the outside county does. Didn't request it, so.
And we're obligated to. Pay them.
I don't know why we're obligated to pay them.
Well, we're a part of that housing.
Just like the library fund or any other fund that in the budgeting time, if they come and request, we. Do our best, but if they don't request. We don't just hold them, well, I shouldn't say that because we did have been with swimming pool, wasn't it?
We quit.
I know we quit because they weren't requesting.
Well, that's a pretty good. These folks didn't even send a letter, no loan show up and explain their funding request.
Well, it looks like they gotta have a hundred and twelve thousand forty-two dollars in matching funds to get their grant. Probably the federal government, I suppose.
Because this is a federal program, it has what, it does, it, they give people money for down payments, um, improvements. I remember right from when we were on the Heartland Board and so like Cheryl kinda oversaw. All of that, so it'd be.
Come up and talk to us about.
Is there any way you can either forward that to me or whatever, so I can see if there's a signature or I can see where she's out of, it says Fort Dodge. Iowa dot org, so is her email address. I'll see if I can give her a call today.
I would still make my motion to table any action on this matter until more information is derived. Any other discussion, all favor.
And maybe you should have a conversation with Cole and.
Yeah, that's, cause I told.
Apparently he's been.
Yeah, when he called me, I told him, you need to come up and. Talk to us, but I said, you seem to know more about it than any of us, I said, you need to come up and talk to us about it, cause he wanted us to pick up the difference. No, that it needs to come. You need to discuss that with the board. I said, I can't make a decision like that.
I'd like somebody to pick up my fuel bill. When I go out there this afternoon and put fuel on my semi too, but I don't know if they will.
Have you decided anything yet? I said, no. It's on the agenda.
Well, if we could drive more information, we can make a better decision.
Looks like they gotta have it by September twenty-seventh.
Looks like everybody.
Won't do ten to one.
And I'd also ask, does the city make their contribution? We've already made our five.
Ob- obviously, maybe it doesn't sound like they, you know, you look at all these other counties are, are short also. So then no, then nobody knew that there was this bump.
And we knew things were gonna change from when it went from Heartland to Heart, we knew that.
But they didn't get anything in before.
I can't remember who they said. But I knew it wasn't gonna be supervisors anymore, which.
Same for the other counties too. But they didn't give any information.
Okay, moving on down, plans, uh, committee report.
All right, well, going back to Monday, August twenty-sixth. That afternoon, I had a building families board meeting, Clarion. And that was the only other official extra brick of a meeting I had.
All right, uh, Wednesday, I just go and sign payroll Friday DAs all again.
All right, on the twenty-seventh, I had the, I don't know. Monthly meeting. Twenty-ninth, I had CFR meeting on Zoom. Think that was the last. I do have a question, I've uh. Terry has gotten a couple of phone calls for a request on open meetings. Uh, some information, some guys tried to get, is trying to get ahold of me. Terry sent me an email, I called him and left him a message. And he called back to Terry because he said he couldn't understand my message. So when they call or. I don't come and get the information that he's requesting, he can ask Terry or whoever he's asking, right? I just wanna make sure I'm. So I'm gonna call him again after the meeting and, and uh.
Was it, was he a civic plus? I think honestly, it's a. Tell marketing them. Plus provides. Information for counties like our web, like websites and stuff like that. I think. But you know.
I'll show you the email where I sent it. And then I guess, uh, this isn't anything to do with meetings, but yesterday, uh, we lost one of our uh. Teachers, former teacher, uh, administrator, um, coach back when I was in school. Coach, Mr. T passed away yesterday, it's a huge. He's been fighting cancer for a long time. It's a huge loss to the. The community, he is a one in a million.
He is a great administrator.
You never seen him without a suit and tie, he was just classy guy. Rest in peace for me, for, for all of us, for, he was unbelievable, so. That's all I have.
Okay, I have not had any um, actual meetings, but we have been short-staffed at the daycare. So I worked at the daycare on the third. The, the fifth and the sixth.
I'm glad I got a bad leg.
Man, let me tell you. I was exhausted Friday night. Yeah, I was in the, in the infant room those three days and then I finished up uh. In the Panther Room one night and then I can't remember, I can't, but anyway, I was just like, oh my god. They, and the problem, and it's a revolving door within, it's just the same thing, you know. Uh, we're gonna be raising our rates so that we can pay our employees better. But to pay them what, even the Casey's or, yeah, you can't compete, no, and it's hard work, it is. Unbelievably hard work. There was anywhere from five to six, seven babies, two of us. And the ratio I think is one to four, but still it's like. You got one thing here, you're feeding one, you're kinda, you know. Yeah, yeah, somebody's, somebody's always pooping, but we got them all to sleep one time, one time.
Cause they're all making noise.
Oh, yeah, and then one wakes up the others and it's like, oh my gosh, yeah. And then at the end of it, and I was at the end of the day with the older kids, they're tired, they want their moms. You know, it's just like any other thing, so, but I mean, I, you got, we really gotta. The stash credit for the ones who are there because it is a lot of work and it's hard work and. Yeah, and if we price for what we need to be able to pay people thirteen to whatever per hour. The parents can't afford the. The cost of the day, so I don't know what we're gonna do, we're having a, we're having a board meeting this Tuesday, so it's just. Yeah. Yeah.
The application fee, but they do.
I think so, yeah, to get, once, yeah, and that pretty, and all daycares do that, that application fee. And it's pretty usually one. So much per child that they're putting in. I know Chelsea had to pay like six hundred bucks application fee for her too. Yes. Up there, but I mean, so, I mean, we're fairly reasonable for what. That's all I got.
Okay.
Do you not schedule this week?
I said, I'm gonna play military.
It was in Humboldt. Uh, Wednesday the twenty-eighth, I was down to Region Five hazmat meeting, we met out to the. Anhydrous Plant. Cox out there and they give a tour of that. Uh, Kyle was out there for that also. Then I went back to Fort Dodge, uh, that evening. For, uh, three thirty in the afternoon for a Midas meeting. Speaking of Midas, I got a letter from Shirley. And Chris also got one, looks like it's sent to you also. I took down our minutes showing that we approved Alyssa and Cole resigned. We will need to have the county appoint replacements, we will need one person that will represent the cities in Humboldt County. This can be any city representative, mayor, council clerk, administrator. From any city in Humboldt. And an economical development representative. The representative also serves on the Midas revolving loan fund com, subcommittee. I'm also inquiring about dues for Midas, I know that David had called me telling me that the board of supervisors was holding our dues. Some of the projects were complete. He asked about the status of the Humboldt County mitigation jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. The zoning maps, development from your previous paper zoning map and the Humboldt County Comp Plan. I explained to him that the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan and the Humboldt County zoning maps will be complete. And sent by seven twenty-six. They were sent and we have a problem with the zoning maps, Trish. Supposed to get with Stacy and figure them out. Let her know what you've got wrong with them. Uh, and draft copies of the Humboldt County Comp Plan would be sent as we complete them. The Hazard Mitigation Plan was sent to Kyle on seven twenty-four. And he is waiting for. Odison, and I believe that got approved last week at their meeting. So now that uh, mitigation plan can be completed.
Is that the piece that will put it back in motion?
The piece will put her back together, then we can send it back in and that'll, they can finalize it. And finish it up. Mitigation plan, the Humboldt County zoning maps, which Randy approved, was sent to you on seven twenty-four. We got them and we got questions on it. As for the comp plan, we explained to Dave that when we spoke with Kyle and Cole about our shortage of staff. Kyle said we needed to prioritize the hazard mitigation plan. Stacy explained prior rotation, the hazard mitigation plan would put the comp plan on hold. And we were told that it was, it's what's needed to be done. Stacy, Stacy let Randy know about the situation. Now that the hazard mitigation plan is complete, we're not now getting back to working on the comp plan. That was from Shirley, head of all the executive director of Midas. I've got that last week, September sixth, when she sent that out.
So my question, then, we withheld that. Payment. At what point are we gonna feel comfortable? Enough to pay the, that payment? After they put that other part back in our hands, I mean, is that something more we're thinking of? Because.
We're waiting on the comp plan.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
This board said they wasn't gonna pay them until they got the comp plan.
Okay, that's all I'm. That way, she knows that when we have that plan in our hand, then, and we can tell her that. We have our plan so that we can look at it, verify it.
After the meeting, I talked with Stacy for probably twenty minutes or better. I asked her if she would come up and explain some of this stuff to the boards. What'd she say? She said she would. She would let us know where we're at and they would look at the map again and. You had questions on that, she says I can blow it up bigger and we can figure out what's what on it.
Take some research on.
Like I said, that was Wednesday last week, so.
The other thing we need to remember is we have to appoint a couple of people for that board, also have, what was the other board that? We're needing a person.
Civil service.
Civil service, so. Pretty soon, we gotta put these things in. In motion instead of just, well, they keep sliding and we forget and.
I don't know what Humboldt problem was. At the meeting before last month. That was June, June's meeting. All Alyssa. Was on the agenda and they were talking, but I had to leave early cause I had another meeting that day. So I left early, early and they were just getting to them. At the next meeting, they resigned, they asked us to resign, so I'm not sure what the problem was, but. They're using Midas money for some of their stuff downtown. So I don't, I don't know where they're at. We need to find out if they, somebody on the. Humboldt side wants to be on that board. I think they should be, but it's not the administrator, it should be the mayor or council or.
Someone to keep their voice in the mix.
And a economic development representative.
Well, she's willing, she's willing to come and visit, then.
Yes, yes.
She's willing to come and, and at least try to get some names together so we can move this thing forward. Yeah, but I haven't been able to get a. Slot that I got free. Sandy and I said we, we, we would meet with her. Her and Cole both, so. Unless next year's chair wanted to jump in there and also precede me, I mean, I'll gladly. I didn't think you would.
Next Midas meeting is uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. And also Midas has a.
What time is that Midas board meeting?
Three thirty in the afternoon.
And where do they have been?
Uh, at City Hall in Fort Dodge, second floor. Uh, at City Hall in Fort Dodge, second floor. You go around back, you take the elevator and you're right there.
They're having the same thing as this road unit and second floor.
October tenth, Midas is having their, I believe it's fiftieth anniversary. From five to eight at the Laramore and everybody's invited. On the board.
What anniversary is it?
I think it was the fiftieth.
Fifty?
I believe that's what they were saying.
Matt, did they, did they hear on the radio, uh, mobile food pantry's Thursday?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they moved to Thursday because of the food, uh, truck, they were having issues with food being able to be delivered. So instead of Wednesday, it'll be Thursday. I heard you make that announcement last week and before I forget it. So it's Thursday at the same time from four thirty to whenever they run out.
I got it down there and it did as well. Okay, you got anything for us? Anything else to, uh, come before the board?
More than to adjourn.
Second.
All discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Both, very. Ten oh three, ten oh two, three.